We're gonna go ahead and get this, uh, get this meeting started. We have a, uh, department updates. Where we wanna start? Everybody don't speak at one time. I know the silence is definite. Uh, Phil, give me, give me a question.
All right, uh, water department, well, I think we sold ten meters this month, or month of November. Uh, just now getting them wrapped up with all the weather and holidays. That's about it on the, in the water. Uh, now the salt brine operation that we've got in process. Got the concrete in the walls poured, or the walls are being poured for the salt barn. And got a gentleman we're gonna get to, uh, put the roof on it. Once that's done, we'll, Kim will have the salt delivered. The salt maker, or the brine maker should be here thinking around Christmas. Uh, that'll be about the six week mark. And it's, we got two to three days, I think. I can't remember what he said. A day and a half to install it and then a day and a half of training. Uh, I think he said twelve hours of training on the making of it and getting our, getting our solutions right. Uh, ordered seven, uh, small salt spreaders that goes in our receiver hitches for our service trucks. That way when we do our, you know, at the hospital or parking lots and stuff, I called a while ago, they're gonna be shipped today or tomorrow the latest, so we'll have them first till next week. Yeah, I know what it'll be after all this, it's hidden, but we'll have them for the next go-round.
All right, we've got, uh, we've got two, two phone calls and meetings, uh, over the past month and a half. Cusawatine, uh, has wanted to talk to us about buying brine from Pickens County instead of having it shipped in. And also, uh, Big Canoe is wanting, they're having their, their brine shipped in from Indiana, Illinois somewhere.
Yeah, I think the city of Jasper is also interested in buying as well.
Okay.
Uh, also, we purchased two, uh, speed detection signs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, about a month ago, I guess. And it took us a couple of weeks to get them figured out and get our, uh, our plan per se. It, it, it's all through the satellites and the web. We got them put up last week. We're having an issue with one. We're still working on that. Uh, it's working well because before we got in and reconfigured our alerts, I had thirty-seven, uh, high-speed alerts within like an hour and a half. So, they're, they're gonna do its job. And it all records it, uh, through the, uh...
The timestamp system.
Yeah, it timestamp them. It takes pictures. It does the whole nine yards. Now, I do need to order, uh, backup batteries for them.
Okay.
I've got the quote. I emailed it to Kim and Barbara to, uh, get that. The kit's two batteries and two chargers. It's like three hundred dollars.
Is Nathan having any other issues with those, those signs? Because the only thing we can do is keep them up two weeks, and then we gotta get more permits from the DOT, especially when we put it on state highway. We was gonna run them for two weeks, um, and, um, you know, the first week they're not gonna be flashing.
Right.
But those two, we've recorded the data. And then the second week, they'll be flashing and also recording the data.
And the purpose of that is to see if there's any change in the, in the speed of these individuals, because most of them are local, I'm assuming, except for the tractor trailers that are coming through there.
Exactly where did you put the signs? I mean...
We put one right there. If you're coming from Tate Elementary, just across the bridge, right there, Newtown Street and fifty-three.
Uh-huh.
We put one right there, and then we put one just above, I think it's Christian Haven and what in the county.
Right there.
Right there. That way they've got that straightaway from the, uh, depot, and then they're coming off the hill from the school. So, that's where they're, you know, they're gaining their speed and they're not slowing down through. Right there at Ms. Turner's house.
Oh, good.
So, yeah.
Isn't that right across from T.O.'s?
Yeah.
Where they get Methodist partnerships? Yeah, okay. All right. Rodney?
Yes, sir.
Interim Director of Planning and Development. How are we, how are we doing so far back there?
Uh, unfortunately, the month of November, it was down just a little bit, but for the year, our revenues are up about eight percent. Uh, building permit, it kinda slows down this time of the year. Uh, we're expecting a larger increase in January, February, when they start getting ready for the spring. Uh, let's see, the landfill up there is still working on getting the things put together. Uh, we're putting in some new pumps on some of those wells to get that gas out of there. As soon as we get the materials in and, uh, get a date set up with Advanced Environmental, then we're gonna go in there and, uh, do the same thing to the five other wells that we did to the first two. So, uh, those two are showing market improvement.
Okay.
They're doing very, very well. We're not having any issues off the backside or anything like that, so we're doing well there.
Yeah, backup, so you got the, uh, that water line up, Yukon Road. Uh, you've got the water meters put in that people have already bought so far, then you got the Sheriff's Department?
Yep.
Got their...
We actually said another meter Monday up there.
Okay. Have you heard anything from Gilmore County?
They're still ways out. I talked to them the other day, because we've been talking back and forth, uh, with the meter vault connections.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're still a ways out, so it's probably gonna be, probably no three, four months before they can get down there.
Right, but they want to buy water, sell water, have they said?
They wanna sell water to us, but we're gonna also put a, uh, meter in. That way if they need to buy water from us, if they have a problem, so that's where we can buy from them or sell.
Okay. Did you ever figure out what the pressure is gonna be at the end of the line?
Right now, it's about forty pounds.
Okay, that's more than I thought it was gonna be.
Yep, but once we get more people on it, it may drop a little bit.
Yeah, that's right.
And Sheriff, I guess, you, you know, we got water put in on the left side of the driveway, so whenever...
You wanna slow down?
Huh?
Whenever we can slow down?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I figured it'll probably be at first of the year when you wanna do it.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll get the material and get the material for you.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Roy? Good to see you and Steph here today. What, uh, y'all got anything brewing?
Everything's brewing. Uh, Rodney sending us plats like crazy with, uh, new property splits and changes. The deed works coming through fast and furious. It's the end of the year. It's the end of two thousand eighteen, which means two thousand nineteen is upon us. And if everybody remembers that owns property, between January first and April first, come in and let us know if there's any changes to your property. Stephanie will be mailing out about thirty-eight hundred personal property return forms for all of our personal property accounts. Uh, just encourage everybody that gets these forms, fill them out, send them back to us. If you don't have any changes, let us know. Sign it and date it. If there are changes, let us know, because this is the time period to do it. Uh, and then, of course, any of the new people that moved into the county, it's time to apply for their home state exemptions, if they qualify for their home state exemption. So, it's a busy time in North Georgia and Pickens County and getting ready for a whole new year, and it's hard to believe it's two thousand nineteen in our doorway.
All right, the, uh, please, if you don't mind, the progress offices here, that'd be a good thing to have in the paper, if you go forward on these dates.
Yes.
With taxes for people to try to stay abreast of situations. I'm gonna back up a second. How's the rec department doing, real quick?
Rec department is doing really well. Uh, we started our first basketball games last Saturday. Um, every age group except for eleven, twelve boys played, and then they played, uh, this past Monday. So, uh, we've got enough for most every single age group to play in-house, but with the girls ages nine, ten, eleven, twelve, we have to cooperate with Gilmore County to get some extra games played. But, uh, other than basketball, um, we'll be doing that till about the end of January, and then starting in January, we'll start getting our baseball dates, uh, for registration and, uh, skills evaluation. And then we'll be starting baseball in March, March twenty, about March twenty-fourth. Um, and then, uh, we'll be doing baseball from that point forward. But, uh, uh, community centers staying busy. Um, pretty much we've got, uh, the walkers every morning from eight to ten a.m., and as soon as the walkers leave, we got pickleball right, right behind them from, pretty much from ten to two every day. So, it definitely stays busy.
How's your, how's your overseeding in the redoing the soccer fields and baseball fields?
Soccer fields, uh, has really taken off, um, with the help of the water department. Um, and we had, uh, Jason Goforth come out there and grade everything out for us. We should be able to move, uh, the U-six and the U-eight soccer field back down to the lower fields, uh, starting in spring. Um, we have a very good standing grass right now, and I just, uh, basically hope that it just keeps on growing, and we should be fine.
All right, any issues with the building, with the complex whatsoever out there?
As of right now, knock on faux wood, but, uh, all the units are working. Um, heat's working fine. Um, probably working a little too good for the pickleballers, but, you know, we have to have heat in the building, so it is what it is. But, uh, no, everything is working at the building currently.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nicholson, E.O.C.
The, I heard Monday about the five generators we've put applications for. It's been moved on up to the second step, which is now basically jumping through the hoops. The money's there, so we've gotta do the latest paperwork on that and have it returned by December twentieth. The guy also told me there was more money left from Hurricane Michael, so we can apply for more generators with this next go-round. How, I was gonna do the Carlin Fire Department, the new one, and the one at Tate. And that, uh, it's a little bit different since our county wasn't directly impacted by it. There wouldn't be a state match, but we would get a federal money for, pay seventy percent of it. So, that's still a win-win for us. So, I'm gonna put in for those two, or anything else when I talk to Sloan and Philip that we could think of, you know.
All right.
One for the, uh, fuel dump for the pumps and all. That one got approved, so we should be able to have that all the time.
And then, Mr. Barnes, I think is gonna give you an update on what the Hind fart departments got down there.
Yeah, and then as far as, because they have added that now you can also do a limited little grant for a transfer switch, which those are expensive.
Mm-hmm.
But they carry it now as a separate item, so paperwork's a little bit different.
Is, uh, just a quick question on that. Is, is the Hind fart department three-phase or single-phase? You, you know? I'm, I'll check myself.
But any...
Uh.
Transfer switches are now a separate item too, so...
Yeah, okay. I've got an active three-phase, uh, two hundred and three-phase disconnect. I didn't know if, but anyway. What's the, uh, while I got you, what's the update on the web?
Okay, the last thing I have is confidence is increasing potential winter storm. I have a webinar at one o'clock. Temperatures currently expected to remain just above freezing, but there was, should be anticipated limited travel impacts Sunday night and Monday night.
Sunday night and Monday night.
Rainfall totals are expected to exceed two and a half inches.
When is the...
With some localized flooding.
When is the last, when, when the school break for Christmas is it?
The twentieth.
The twentieth.
Yeah.
Okay. And nicely, they've been out on break if that happens to hit, but, uh, okay.
So, after that webinar, and they start scheduling special webinars, then I'll be contacting Mr. Wilson. I sent, I forwarded this on to Stacy this morning, and I think that...
All right. Anything else?
But it does look like we're gonna hit something.
Y'all got any questions? Kimmer?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, sir.
We've got all the striping done on the roads we've resurfaced this summer. Um, now, there is some that we did, we weren't able to stripe. Uh, it has to be eighteen feet in width for a center line. Has to be twenty foot in width for a center next line. So, uh, all the roads that met the criteria, we did get striped, and that's been completed.
What's your status on wild timber, one or two more that we're gonna try to re...
Yeah, the, on the re-strip, yeah, I've got that. I've called the striping companies, just, you know, they're a little behind due to the weather. We're gonna get those in some of them.
Okay.
Uh, we're still running long-term mowers, trying to run them throughout the winter. I've got one on the west side over around Big Ridge, and the other ones over on the east side around the Elk Creek area. Trying to get as much of the growth as we can cut back throughout the winter, so we're running them all in.
Okay. How's the, uh, young Luke, whether you getting that, ready for next?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, also, we're, uh, we've been getting all our salt equipment ready, snowing-will equipment. Been doing that, and we've got it all pretty much ready in case, you know, anything does happen this weekend and this winter, so all that's up and going.
You got the on-call list already set up for nine-one-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We do. Um, also, we're, we're gonna be getting started back on our street sign updates this winter. We got a little behind over the summer, you know, with the short-handed and all, but we're gonna get started back on that. We got all the state routes covered. Um, got all those done, and we're working on our main county roads right now, and then we'll branch out the, the smaller roads. But, uh, we should make a lot of headway with that this winter.
Okay.
Still putting in quite a few pipes. We put in four in the last couple of weeks. We put two in down on Long Branch Road. There was one that was rusted and collapsed, so we had to replace it. And also, we put one in over on Myrtle Street off Gordon Road, and one there at the entrance of Recycling that was deteriorated. So, we are still putting in quite a few pipes, and we're over a hundred pipes for the year and still, still counting, so. Corrected a lot of drainage problems over the year, so.
Have you got your, uh, I think I talked to you first of the week, hear any status on your vacuum system that you want to use to suck the leaves out of ditches?
Yeah, we're looking, we're in contact with the company, and it is approved through the budget, so we've got to get it over and get it on the way.
Okay.
And that's gonna help us out a lot, you know, with the leak problem, ditches.
Well, I'd rather do that is try to keep digging the ditches. I'd have to get a one-eight-hundred dig number and wind up digging a water line out of the ground to clean leaves out of ditches.
The, um, we had redone one of the old ambulances, our sign truck, you know, the motor went bad on our sign truck, so we phased it out. We redone one of the old ambulances, had it painted, and got the bed, you know, sandblasted, the old bed sandblasted and everything. We'll have it up and going hopefully by the first of next week.
Okay. Did you give me your driver's seat for it?
Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay.
There is a pair in the driver's seat, but pretty much the truck's in good condition.
I knew the bucket that y'all had in there was getting rid of rail. I figured you'd go to Home Depot and get your new orange bucket to go in there. Guys to sit on, but, uh... Any, any further questions? All right, Paula, how's, how's the Human Resource Office doing?
We're just taking it right along, and we officially got open enrollment closed out the last week in November, and the benefits company has got us all the changes and updates, and been working on them. We'll have a few more at the, at the end of the year between the last payroll and the first payroll, and that's, been trying to get that kind of stuff together, the retirement participants and changes. And then we lock a two-day window, we call it all the holidays, get all the changes in there before the new year. And, um, as far as workers comp, I think we had three claims in November, and one of them is, was owed in a loss of time, and, uh, that was in the fire department. And we changed the, the day for the, um, retirement man to come and sign up new hires to the second Tuesday of every month. It was the third Tuesday, but we changed it to the second at nine o'clock, and I'll still send out reminders to the departments. And I guess that's about it.
All right. Sheriff, good to see you. You were saying to hear, uh, what you got brewing?
I've got just a couple of things. Not a, not really a whole lot to report from the last meeting. Uh, our computer software that we've been talking about and working on, uh, we're actually getting ready to go live, I think, today with, or yesterday with our jail software and also our records management software. Uh, we're, we're also able to install the laptops in the cars to help us with the CAD and through G C I C. Really want to brag on Kristy Easterwood with the nine-one-one center. She's been tremendous on helping us get this thing switched over and, uh, keeping us in line and, uh, and really with the training and any issues we've got, we can always call on her, and she's, she's been tremendous, so just wanna brag on her a little bit. But if you call or if the deputies are coming out doing reports, uh, they're all gonna be down on the, uh, the laptops. Uh, so just be patient as we try to figure out what we're doing and get this new system up and going.
Well, that system be locked in to the fact that, you know, we're putting in the ambulance for park trucks also, and when, when nine-one-one is called out or get called, but we have ambulants going out there, and the person's got the medical history, that person is sometimes is, is available on those. Are you, are you, your guys gonna be privy to that too?
We are all tied in together.
Okay.
There's certain information that can be shared, some that can't. Uh, and we are sharing, you know, what can be shared across from fire, EMS, and, uh, law enforcement, and then also through the nine-one-one center. And it's making it much more convenient, uh, and the information is, is much quicker. So, like I said, that's, that's going very well. Couple of things, uh, we've been working on the citizen's response, uh, or active shooters with our high schools and our school system. Uh, we just finished up this past month and have every sworn law enforcement officer in our agency certified on active shooter and been training with, uh, all of our school teachers and school personnel. Uh, we just finished that up. Uh, we've got another class coming up in February where we will have every sworn law enforcement officer in this county, whether it be State Patrol, probation, parole, City of Jasper, or the sheriff's office. We're all training together, working together, uh, in the event that we have an active shooter, we're all gonna be on the same page and be prepared for that. Uh, what I do wanna let folks know is that if you have churches or community organizations that is interested in doing a citizen's response, uh, we would love to get in and talk to as many people as possible to, again, bring everybody together in the event of something like that happens here. Uh, we actually have scheduled on January the fourteenth, uh, after the courthouse closes, all the staff at the courthouse and all the courts will be doing a, a class along with some of the attorneys there. And, you know, we, we hope, pray it never happens, but if it does, we wanna be prepared for that. With the holidays coming up with, uh, Christmas and New Year's Eve, we're gonna be out doing, uh, random DUI safety checks throughout the county. So, uh, you know, we try to let people know, you know, obviously don't drink and drive, but if you do over the next several months, uh, we're gonna be out doing, uh, safety road checks out in, uh, several different neighborhoods, so. The last thing, I was asked to just touch base, and I know some of us have probably heard enough about our, our budget and our budget process. Uh, I know we started out originally, I think, when we first sat down with, like, a six-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, and brag on Fay, and she's been great to work with, and, uh, just want everybody to know that there was really no fighting and feuding, and I don't know what was put out there on the paper, but, uh, you know, we sat down with board commissioners, we discussed our needs and what was going on with the sheriff's office, and, uh, we were able to whittle down that number from the six-hundred down to well over four-hundred with three or four meetings and paid twist and arm every chance you had. But, um, you know, we're, you know, we finalized that, and I think you guys just voted on that prior to this meeting, but again, I just wanna let folks know that that's, uh, you know, that process was, was not what was really...
And we will, and I can speak for myself, I can't fix it very big, but I think we all wanna say how much we appreciate everybody working together to make this happen without being an adversarial type of contract.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hardy, what do, what do you got brewing today?
Well, like I said, we had a public hearing for the, um, budget. It was advertised for two weeks in the, in the newspaper, and, um, there was no one here really that made any comments, but we discussed it. And, um, that will be on the agenda for the December twenty-four meeting for you all to approve the two thousand nineteen budget. And, uh, other than that, everything is, is going well.
I know yesterday was the last day, I think yesterday was the last day to pay your taxes. Did Darren, Mr. Satterfield, give you any indication of what the percentage is?
I do have a report from Darren. He, he could not be here today. I think he said he has a conference call with the state at ten. But, um, as, through yesterday, he, the collections, he's collected, uh, twenty-three-million-five-hundred-eight-five-thousand, and that's, uh, eighty-one-point-three percent of the, um, of the total that's due. And, um, they, they still have a lot of money there that hasn't been posted yet, so at the end of this week, they'll know more what, you know, what they've collected through the closing, through the closing.
Those are just preliminary numbers?
But it's, yes. But normally, what I, what I have always looked at is what we collect through the end of December, and normally their collections are between ninety-three to ninety-five percent by the end of December.
You think they're still on track for that?
It looks like it, yes.
All right. Any other questions for the group? All right, I've got a, I've got a couple of, a couple items I wanna run by y'all real quick. I had talked to the, the county clerk this morning, and, uh, we are looking at possibly hoping to get an authority training set for Pickens County. These boards that we have out here that are authority boards, industrial authority, joint industrial authorities, airport authorities. Um, we are, we are in process, now that we've had a whole lot of new members that are now sitting on these boards, uh, we need to get, we need to get them trained, we need to get them set up. It's gonna be, most of them are just one-day classes, so we're trying to get the word out, especially with, with the City of Jasper, if they've got any authorities, with neighboring counties, because what I'd like to do, and, and I talked to her with, with Ms. Lisa, is to try to get an instructor downstairs, instead of everybody having to go to Savannah or Jekyll or, or North Georgia College or whatever. Uh, if we can get somebody to teach authority training downstairs and the, and hopefully maybe the county attorney can sit in on that one, because I'm sure bonding, uh, bonds, bonding, taxation, that some of these authorities have the ability to do, need to know what the, what the process is and what it does to the tax base, possibly do to the tax base of, of a county or a city as we go forward. So, that's in the works. Ms. Lisa's working on it. And also, uh, to let y'all know, we have been approached, um, as, as two commissioners here know, uh, we have a joint station up on the, on Monument Mount. It's Dawson County Station Eight that's actually in Pickens County, uh, and is a joint, joint partnership between Pickens County and Dawson County. Uh, two weeks ago, we had a, had a, uh, town hall meeting up there at the facility, and, and as we go forward with this area, I'm gonna call that area the community. It's not just Pickens County. It's not just Dawson County. It's not just Bent Tree or Big Canoe. I will be referring to it as we go forward, if I need to, as the community up there in Sunrise Ridge. Uh, the community up there has made a, uh, has come to and made a recommendation that we want to see if Pickens County would take over that station. Uh, I've told them that I would run it before the commission board. I really didn't see an issue. Uh, we don't, we would like nothing to change between us and Dawson County. We still wanna do an automatic aid agreement, uh, if they so desire. Uh, but, but our main goal is for the protection and cooperation of the citizens in that community up there. Walk-Act Community, as they call themselves, has got money and time invested in that station in, in Dawson, and Pickens County does too, and Dawson County does also. So, uh, it's, it's a pretty valid situation for the I S O ratings, and that station, of course, as we all remember, was actually designed as a first responder station because of the aging group of population that's up there and, uh, and the response towns it takes for Pickens County, as well as Dawson County farm rescue and ambulance services to get up there. So, uh, we need to look at that. It's pretty close. Uh, most of the training that's happened up at Station Eight over the years has been done by Pickens County. Um, so, uh, we all work close together. We would like to keep the automatic aid valid, um, as we go forward, but like I say, I have to sit down with Dawson County and, and our county attorney. I've looked at the automatic aid agreement. I just wanna give you two a heads up on what's going on, in case y'all hear something rumbling out in the future. And, uh, and then, of course, the media's here, um, so, uh, we just wanna like to make it an easy transition, and, uh, if, if that's what the citizens want, we're here to try to help them and make this process as easy as possible. Other than that, um, I have no other questions, or, you know, is anybody, yes, Roy?
I've got one thing. I forget a lot of times in our meetings that the media is here, and it's a good way to reach the public. One of the things that our office will really be doing the next few months is going out in the field, reviewing properties, picking up new construction. On days when you wouldn't let the dog out on the porch, my people will be out there measuring properties. And what we want everybody to know, they're gonna have identification on them. The vehicles are gonna be marked, so hopefully you won't not know who these people are, who they represent. At the same time, it's coming up on census time, and there are census workers out visiting properties. I had one visit me the other night. They do not have a marked vehicle. They're using their private vehicles, but I asked them for their identification and stuff like that, but they are out in the area. They do, are working on the federal census, but my people should be in white jeeps with the logos, and they will have identification on them. And if anybody's ever around your property, and I know this goes back to the sheriff's department, people trying to report unusual people on properties, because you've got a lot of the private sector out there too, call our office if you have any questions. We can let you know whether it's our people or not, uh, and maybe cut down on a lot of We can let you know whether it's our people or not, uh, and maybe cut down on a lot of the traffic and.
Has that been, has that been reported to nine-one-one, knowing that the feds are starting to census up again toward the, toward the deputies and, and our group are involved? I mean, we're gonna have, they're out there in their own personal private cars, uh, and with, the days are getting shorter, uh, has anybody informed nine-one-one that this is going on? Because I haven't heard anything about it until you mentioned it just now. So they are aware?
I would assume that they are. The federal government works on their own timetable and their plans, but that's, I just got to thinking about that. It's the holiday season. I know that we have reported some suspicious vehicles of people riding around, maybe in places they shouldn't, but there are census workers out there, just ask them for their identification if you have any questions and just wanna let you know, we'll be there, we'll be in marked vehicles, uh.
That's a scary thought, I mean, you got a citizen out here that might have a driveway that's two hundred yards long and you want them to get out and, I mean, to ask somebody